It's hour of 6 o'clock, and if you could all rise for Matt Tuckler's entrance. We're fortunate to be blessed with his presence and presence of the planning commission. And I'm trying to get my notes organized here. And we'll call this meeting to order. And John, if you want to call your planning commission to order.
We'll call the planning commission meeting to order.
Outstanding. Well, sadly, we have limited time, but I will open by saying I'm excited to see the planning commission and grateful for all of your all's work and efforts on behalf of our city. At some point, we talked about having a semi-annual sit-down organized. I'll remind you, we don't have to wait and do it semi-annual. If you want more meetings, we can certainly organize that. But at least twice a year, the ambition being in January to look at budget concerns and opportunities, and then July to talk about hopes and dreams and things of that nature. And that agenda can adjust as we go along. But John and I put together a bit of an agenda that's exceedingly ambitious. It's about two weeks' worth of material that we hope to accomplish in 50 minutes. And part and parcel of what I hope that we'll accomplish tonight and going forward is have dialogue about the planning commission and expectations from city council, and then consequently, the expectations and ambitions of the planning commission. John, I'll get you to add anything that you want to that intro.
No, that's, thank you, Frank. That's good.
And. As documents are circulating, what I discovered from John's organization is that page one is an agenda, and the subsequent three pages are annexed supporting material. And we have it broken down to help us stay on time. I'm going to be the timekeeper. Thank you, sir. The document before you, we're going to work to stick towards update and discussion on catalyst projects. And Arnie, I'll let you begin, and I'll start my timer. You've got 20 minutes.
Just to flip over to the next page, going through them very quickly. We have six catalyst projects that are, I guess, more staff-related. And one is assessing Stormwater runoff fees, and as you know, that's been put on pauses, I understand it. The next one is Jordan's Point Park improvements. There has been some capital improvement funding set aside for that, and I believe the intent is to set aside a certain amount every year going forward for improvements to George's Point Park. Bike Ped Plan, we did submit an OIPI. Sorry, I can't say that anymore. An Office of Intermodal Planning and Investment Technical Assistance Grant, and we were awarded that. So we will be working with two consultants that went in together for their proposal. One is Michael Baker International, and the other is EPR. And those were chosen by OIPI and not with our input. So we do have a consultant or two consultants that will be working with us for the next nine to 12 months for a citywide bike ped plan. Increase in sidewalk connectivity. Money was also set aside in the CIP for that. There was another item to reprogram traffic signals. I learned through Jeff Martone that the engineering capstone students at WNL put together a study of some of the signals, and we have already implemented their timing suggestions, particularly along Nelson Street. And we do have that available if you were interested in looking at. And we may not actually have the final report from the WNL engineering students, but we do have at least the preliminary if you were interested in that. So again, we have made some adjustments to particularly the signals along Nelson Street and adjusted the timing on those. Accessory dwelling unit ordinance, as we'll get into later on, that is one of five annual text amendments. You have one on your agenda tonight, and then we have four larger ones that'll take a little bit more time. So we are currently working on the accessory dwelling unit ordinance.
Very good. And we'll ask everybody to utilize the microphones because we're recording for anyone that may want to tune in later and hear the thrilling words of this meeting. Thank you, Arnie. Any questions of Arnie or observations of that plan? Hearing none. John, take it away. Go ahead and press that button. Let's see if it'll.
Testing, testing.
Yep. There you are.
Now I'm, okay.
Now you're hot.
Now I'm learning again. I was used to looking at the Zoom mics. Okay, there were two other catalyst projects suggested by the planning commission. One was on small area plans, and the other one was on green infrastructure. On the small area plans, when we were talking about the opportunity zones, we developed language with the help of Kelly Davis and the Berkeley Group and recommended that, given the unique planning, design, and investment prospects opportunity areas may warrant, that maybe we should be looking at an instrument to develop small area plans. And there's a strategy in the land use chapter, and all of this is to keep saying, we want to be using the comp plan. So we go and look at it and say, what's in there, and what did it say we were going to do? And so one of them was to engage the community to identify development goals for opportunity areas and assess the need for small area plans. So one proposal that we, well, the proposal that we have is that we would hold an educational session within regular planning commission hour or meeting. And the idea is to develop a commonly understood definition of a small area plan. I think that's part of the problem. A lot of times, we're all coming at it from different perspectives. So is there a definition that we agree, including what's the legal basis for them? And maybe where, you know, we have, what, five or six opportunity zones, but some of them are quite small. So what is the appropriate area to think about that? And the comp plan highlights East Lexington, East Nelson Street corridor, and also South Lexington as two areas that are. And then, and the desired outcome would be, do we want to go ahead with this? Does this make sense for us as a city to use that as an instrument? The format is really a short presentation covering some questions, and then open it up to discussion among us and invite Arnie and Jim and whoever else we think would be good to comment on it in terms of the city, as well as yourselves. I have offered, having organized lots of sessions over the years, to take the initial stab at organizing this session. And so listening to all of you, to some of you and questions I've had that I've heard, so, you know, some of the questions I think we would be answering is, what's the typical focus of a small area plan? Should we be looking at the financial implications of land use decisions in terms of potential revenue out of an area and also the costs associated with infrastructure if required? What's the legal basis? What's the appropriate scale? Are there advantages and disadvantages? And then what about precedence? So we have precedence in terms of not a high-tech plan, but for South Lexington and East Lexington, there were those joint committee meetings with the respective planning commissions to look at development in East Lexington in 2007 and South Lexington 2004. So that's kind of, that's it. I think Arnie and I will work on a schedule, but I think after Labor Day sometime October, September, October.
John, with that idea, who would lead the education piece that you're speaking of? Or would it be facilitated by a third party?
It's whatever anybody would like. I've offered to do the initial research and pull together a presentation. I think some having, I think if we can find someone who could, with professional credentials, who could comment on how they've used these plans, you know, and how effective they've been or not been. So identifying outside speaker would be good. And then have a facilitated discussion. So someone could be our, could facilitate it. If I'm doing the presentation, I'd rather not facilitate.
Sure.
Lessons, hard lesson learned over life. So that's, any other questions on that? Happy to take your suggestions, thoughts on issues we should be addressing in that short, one-hour session.
I mean, I think I've been hearing that phrase for a long time, small area plan. And I think that the citizens have also heard it, and they flat out don't know what it is. And they don't know if it is really something that the planning commission or the city is driving, or if it's something that a developer brings forward and says, I want to develop this area, and here's my small area plan, and I want you, and I want to fit this into the existing zoning ordinance and otherwise wouldn't. So the whole concept of who uses a small area plan? Is this something that you just allow to be used, and then someone comes forward to submit one? Or is this your vision for a smaller? Yeah, I think that there's just not an understanding of how it could be used and who would use it and.
Well, I think that's an excellent point, and to make the distinction using examples. Spotswood is more of a site plan. If you're talking about a neighborhood or an area of the city, then you're talking about a small area plan. So I think you're absolutely right, David, is to get those, that's what I mean about, let's agree on a definition of what it is. And so, yeah, that's.
And John, when you and I talked, one of the issues that I raised, if you look, I'm really eager for government not to get into development and planning versus developing what South Main Street. I'm pounding on the table and advocating that we want to see a South Main Street Renaissance. There's VDOT property that'll be coming available, co-ops making some changes, there'll be some other changes, or some other property for sale. And to, I don't feel like the city of Lexington has any expertise in saying, here's what it should look like. Nor do I want. When we look at failed projects like Buena Vista's Vista Lanks and Lexington City's Thompson's Knoll and Tavishuret, and here's what we'd like to see in our community and things of that nature, it just has not worked in the past. Doesn't mean it can't work in the future. But is that a small area plan? Because I'm still very eager for us to say, we've got solid zoning. You guys have done a great job of saying, here's what can happen in South Main Street. And it's incumbent upon the city staff to find a developer who's interested in bringing a hotel or apartment building or whatever it's zoned for to be able to do, or the co-op to expand, or a restaurant and convention center. I wouldn't want to limit any developer to say, oh, no, no, we only want to see, you know, strip mall with agricultural center, et cetera, et cetera. But getting a definition first.
But I think getting a definition and what are the elements of a small area plan.
Right.
Would you want, if you looked at South Lexington or East Nelson Street, would you want to change the densities? Would you want mixed use? Would you want, you know, these are, these are the things you can be thinking about and saying, what, how do you want to shape the character of that area with your public investments? If you want to improve the connectivity, which is a big point that we all make, well, how do you connect South Lexington to Lexington so that it's bikeable or walkable and not just drivable? And even if for East Nelson, how do we connect it to the surrounding neighborhoods more efficiently so that you can walk instead of having to? Anyway, that's, so I think those are, that's why I think it'd be helpful for us to hold this session, and then let's agree on what we think makes sense, given these different development philosophies.
And from a scheduling standpoint, looking, if I were to say maybe October-ish for the planning commission to hold a meeting, to educate everyone, and anybody who's interested, participate.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody have any objection to that? Staff?
You all love, oh, that's a Jamie thumbs up, which is always good to see on Zoom.
I have a quick comment. I didn't hear.
Pull your microphone down so it records better.
Is that better?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I didn't hear you mention, Mr. Mayor, the casino that is probably on somebody's drawing board right now. But in general, I've lived in Lexington for 30-ish years now, and the sense that I've always had that we develop and do things mostly by crisis, not necessarily by overall planning. And to have a planning commission that can plan, I view, is really positive. And this, the evidence of what I'm seeing positively is the latest comprehensive plan. This is the best document that doesn't gather, at least as I see it now, won't gather dust as previous plans tend, tended to do in there. And so I would encourage getting the definition right for the small area plan and whatnot so we don't have to deal with the crisis. We have some ideas already circulating and whatnot, not wait for anybody, developer in particular, to come in and say, this is what we want to do with this. You know, just look what happened, for example, with the VDOT property and now what happened with the Spotswood property. They came in with a proposal, and everybody's jumping through hoops to see how that's going to work, and, you know, the city's looking at tax money. So I want to encourage the development and the small area plan discussion to see what can happen.
Very good.
Short comment on that is, I think in, I sat in on some of your early meetings on the VDOT property and have been aware of other discussions. And I think it just struck me that we really need to not just be so parcel-driven in how we're making a decision, but we should pull back a little bit and look at the larger context. And I think that, so finding a way to do that is what I think we're trying to do here. And come up with the names that we all agree on what it is. So that's.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, you asked about staff comment. I wouldn't want to say, and I've talked with Mr. Driscoll about this, that, you know, staff already has plenty on our plate. And we always know that we're going to have citizen inquiries, whether it's about the skate park, kids' place, street renaming that could come up that'll necessarily demand that we, we adjust our schedules and undertake those activities as well. So to the extent that we can avoid tying up staff with any of these issues, whether it's the small area plan or the green infrastructure activity, we really have to make sure that occurs. I really have to try and safeguard Arnie and other staff from spending time on things that are currently not in their basket, and their basket's going to be even fuller as we continue through the fiscal year. I mean, that's just the way things occur. So these are some things that we can preclude staff involvement from where other activities come up, it's almost impossible to preclude staff from getting involved. So I just want to keep that in front of everyone because we're plenty busy. So, and that's part of my responsibility, make sure Arnie gets the things done that are on his plate.
Jim, we've heard you before, and it's why the commission said, we'll go ahead and do these without involving staff, just so that things don't die on the shelf and we can nudge things along. And then if there's an agreement that this is important, then it gets worked into your priorities as to go, whether to go forward or not with it. So totally understand. Yep, clear.
We have about four minutes on this.
Green infrastructure?
Section, yes.
Oh, I can do that one and two.
Perfect.
Now, the green infrastructure, there was a lot of enthusiasm in promoting the green infrastructure within the comp plan. We had a committee that was led by Jamie facilitated and did a fantastic job. And they came up with a lot of recommendations that we brought into that chapter. And so what we wanted to do is, they were very interested in reconvening themselves as a group, and so we said, okay, let's try to do that. I've been working with fellow commissioners to develop a scope of what could that be? What could they get involved in? And when Arnie announced the bike ped plan funding had come through, then that made a lot of sense that maybe that's the first issue under a larger theme of connectivity that we reconvene the group to be a focus group and provide some advice to the bike ped plan. So that's where we are with that as an approach, and we'll draft another kind of scope of work to share with and see if people are still interested in serving on it. End.
Very good. Much like the small area plan, eager to find out exactly what green infrastructure looks like, whether it's construction materials, is it way of living, or all of the above?
Well, I think that's why the first order of business is to read the green infrastructure chapter and see what we said we wanted to do, and then see, you know, what is it that we, where we'd like to begin. But given the fact, Jim's point about, excuse me for being informal with first names, with staff resources and those issues, we thought, let's really focus their first initiative around helping on the bike ped plan and not try to come up with another plan that then we have to figure out whether or not we have the money to do it.
That's right.
It's remarkable when you know where the alleyways are, how bike-friendly Lexington can be if you, if you know the alleys that are not private, that you can just drive. I mean, you can get from one side of town to the other, staying off of main streets practically by using cemeteries and alleyways. It's quite remarkable, actually. It's, so, I mean, it'll be interesting to develop this.
Yeah, absolutely. I keep trying to take a map with me on walks and say, oh, like that.
There's a lot of alleyways.
Yeah.
You have 50 seconds to hit annex one for updates on catalyst projects. Not sure who is going to embrace that.
Well, that's already been done, really. That's just a reference for you all to look at it later if you'd like. Arnie and I updated that.
Gotcha. Gotcha, gotcha. Excellent. You know, in, looking at that piece, you know, again, one of the things we talked about is going back to, if you will, the proverbial rules of engagement. And if you look on the website for what the planning commission's responsible for, you know, the primary function of the planning commission is to advise city council on matters related to land use planning and development. The commission is responsible for reviewing and making recommendations to city council concerning, and then the laundry list of things. So the depth with which you all have embraced this is awe-inspiring, that you all have gone above and beyond, and we're very, very grateful for that effort. So much like with our school board, the deep dive on a lot of things, the school board's responsible for. And we look at you all for doing the deep dive on things like site plans that we'll get at some point from, can't remember the name of the group, on Nelson Street and certainly the, whomever ends up with Spotswood property and whatever transpires in, on VDOT. The one thing I would observe, Mr. Alga, not everything is from a crisis. We've been planning for development, focus and development of the VDOT property for probably 25 years. It just, some things take a long time to get there. The school board began in 2000, facility study for construction that started, I think, in 2013. So there's, there's a lot of planning and good work that staff has done over the years, and that's certainly being complemented by the comp plan that we have now and the work the planning commission has done. So forgive me for rambling, but sharing some thoughts. The next item on the agenda, proposed planning commission schedule. And John, I'll let you speak to that.
Arnie, do you, yeah, thank you, Arnie.
Now, the first part there, excuse me, zoning text amendment, you're going to have the first part of that this evening on your public hearing agenda. We did start this back in October of last year, ended up having 15 of the less intensive, quote-unquote, easier items for you in batch A, which you'll have the public hearing on. And then four of them are going to take more intensive thought and community input. And those four in priority order are small cell wireless facilities, which we've already begun. Then the next one would be planned unit development and zoning district, which you already had a good discussion on that one. Following that will be accessory dwelling units and accessory buildings, and then cottage housing. And that's going to take us a while. In my estimation, those are all about the same, you know, five, six-month process. Actually, it's a little bit shorter than chickens. I was going to use chickens as an example. But all in all, we're going to be at least another year, I predict, with those four items, probably at a minimum. So I will beg of you, after that process over, not to have an annual amendment for at least another year and a half or two. So that's where we are with the zoning text amendments.
All right, talked about the educational session on small area plans, unless you need to touch on that.
No, we're good. Thank you.
And then a joint meeting with county planning commission.
Question mark.
Yes.
So.
Have you solicited the county planning commission?
No, we did have a meeting with them. I can't remember the exact date. The last meeting we, yeah, the last meeting, we ended up saying, well, maybe we should be coordinating on East Nelson Street, you know, the, and, you know, you have a bridge dividing the two. Can you start to have joint development objectives on each side of the bridge? So it starts to be seen as an area and not as too different. So, and the way we left it, this was pre-COVID, really, was that we would follow up and look for opportunities that Arnie and Sam could identify for each jurisdiction to work on within their existing budgets and plans. And is there anything that we could do to align those priorities? So that's the last time we visited. I'm, I'm, well, no, after tonight, I will no longer be approaching anybody as chair. So the next chair of the planning commission can take it up with planning commission if they want to do a scheduled joint meeting. Or if you all feel it's important, then please give us direction.
It may also be a fruitful, if not fun, exercise to have some chats with BV. I know we're not bordering them, but some of their challenges right now, especially in the downtown, what they're doing with their zoning, could at the very least be intellectually beneficial for us. I think in some small regards, they're ahead of us. It's murals, for example. Perhaps we could loop them in. I think this regionality trend, which I've been feeling the last three or four years, is something that won't continue unless we actively contribute to it.
Absolutely. I'd ask council members to respond as well, but I frequently refer to our community as opposed to Lexington, Buena Vista, and Rockbridge County, and invite everybody to adopt that language because we're all in it together and had some conversations with, I know Jim's had some conversations with the county. When you look at people walking, for instance, to Pizza Hut, McDonald's, indoor food line, there's no safe way to get there. The sidewalk stops at Walker Street and trying to find some safe passage. I'm not sure when VDOT's going to deal with that bridge over Route 60, but that intersection at some point, they're going to have to deal with. And looking at it as a region, we invited our friends from the county to look at sewer improvements there collaboratively, and they were not accepting of that invitation. But they've run their redundant or their sister line, and so there's plenty of opportunity for sewer in that direction. David?
I would endorse Jamie's idea because, you know, the quote that has been in about every paper for the last couple of weeks is that since when does, you know, anyone care what Buena Vista does, essentially? And if, you know, I think all the council hears me do the RARO report every meeting for six and a half years, and I always talk about the incredible cooperation between Rockbridge County, the city of Lexington, and Buena Vista. And there's a ton of regional entities where there's a ton of cooperation, and it only makes sense that people not continue that dang phrase that we don't care about each other. And I think you're exactly right. We can learn from them, they can learn from us, let's extend it. And, and, you know, good God, we're six miles apart. So heck of a great idea, and I would love to attend that.
We can't control what the Fighting Blues fight is, but we can certainly support and. We can't control what the fighting blues fight is, but we can certainly support and work collaboratively. Thank you. That was the five minute bell toll before I jumped to developing priorities with staffing and community resources.
Yes, happy to do that. And to, but I, just to comment, I think that's, I spent 10 years working on cross-border regional cooperation in Ireland. So I'm all for working with other jurisdictions. I think the challenge is to find some common goals where there's mutual benefits and then you can have traction. And then also in terms of the planning commission, it's what's within our respective competencies. So there's certain things we can't be cooperating over, but there's others that we should be. So I think that's just a comment.
And I'll add one more piece to that. You know, Arnie and I were on a walkability team that included Tom Roberts from Buena Vista and Mandy McCombs from the county. And that fits in perfectly with our bike and ped plan and the green infrastructure plan. So I do agree, there are opportunities in there and definitely with the, the green infrastructure and the arts and culture and, yeah, in a variety of areas, we have some commonalities.
So maybe that's a task for the planning commission in the future is to identify areas and then suggest those to the council and vice versa.
I'm not so sure identifying, well, I guess, areas of the city. Gotcha. Not particular walls. Okay. That's what I heard you saying. I'm thinking, oh, no, no.
Number three, developing priorities with staffing and community resources. This is very much in response to Jim's advice during our developing of the catalyst projects. And also knowing that we're a small city with a very dynamic and small staff, but we have to break down bits of work into digestible pieces. And I, these are really two-part questions. They're related to each other. Developing realistic work plans around thematic and operational priorities can be an effective way to plan ahead, working within available resources, engaging community partners, the way we're just discussing. So two parts to the question. Drawing on the comprehensive plan, are there pressing issues, priorities, or projects that can be organized into successive actions that build upon each other towards implementation? And the idea is planning ahead that way. And knowing that we have limited resources, are there themes or directions that you would recommend that you feel are important coming out of the comprehensive plan that we could begin to, to do some work on? And, and an example among many would be, say, affordable housing. And if that was a priority, then what is it that we could do over the next two or three years leading us to an affordable housing plan or some steps that we want to do? And so that's what, that's what that idea is. We don't have to do every plan tomorrow and don't have to do every project tomorrow. And the second part of that question is, from your perspective, the council's perspective, are there priority themes from the plan that we should be looking and building into our calendar for next year? So you gave us the charge of chickens one time. Are there, are there particular themes that you think we should be pursuing in this coming, put it into our calendar? It's not necess, the first one is a larger calendar between staff and planning commission. But second is what is it that we should be working on? You may not have the answers tonight. You may and you may not in the time that we have. I think it's more to plant the question to you and to be thinking about it. And then how do we bring that discussion together?
Yeah. But I think a dynamic tension with that is, we don't know when, help me with the name of the property on Nelson Street, the apartment complex, General's Retreat. We don't know when they're coming with a site plan. But when they do, you all are going to need to do a deep dive and look into that. And that's going to take time and energy. Now, if they don't come for a year, then there's time and availability for you all to look and do more aspirational things. Not sure what's going to happen with the VDOT property. Washington Lee's going to show up at some point with a site plan or master plan. And so I can tell you, I'm not sure when some of these things are going to pop, but that's, that's the dynamic challenge in balancing those things. Especially when you look at, I'll say, the relative neglect that city council, I don't know that we've asked you to look at the Jordan's Point Plan, master plan, and help us vet and figure out projects and priorities there. That might be something that council might want to do while we're wrestling and leg wrestling with some other topics. And we also have the cemetery master plan, which we need to engage the cemetery advisory board and perhaps planning and looking at some of those items as well. Again, we look at you all for those deep dives for subdivisions of land, site plans, conditional use applications, et cetera. That's the, the primary business, so the aspirational business. I think we've got a good, seems like we have a good roster of those to work on to keep us busy.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
It's not on the agenda.
Sure.
If WNL did come forward, what about process and the planning commission and the recusals that would need to take place as I look? How would that work in an honest question?
I don't want to speak for Jared and I'm not sitting in front of his name tag, but you don't have a material interest in that outcome, even though you or your spouse may be there. Now, you then have to make the decision, or the planning commissioners will have to make a decision, having that affiliation or being an employee directly, does that appear to be a conflict of interest and would you want to recuse on that basis?
Yeah. Just wondering, we deal with it sometimes.
Right. And we were just sitting down here and we're like, you know, I mean. Well, former city manager and city attorney had a very rigid interpretation. And if you had some modest affiliation whatsoever, you had to recuse yourself, was the advice. I think Jared's opined, you know, if you don't have a direct benefit, but if your boss calls you in, Jamie, and says, I know you're looking at the site plan and here's what you need to ask and what you need to approve, you got a problem and you've got a conflict. No question about it. And that would be for you to decide. Where Pat's wife is working, maybe no conversations, no knowledge whatsoever and no conversation with her at all, Pat's Frida, you know, doesn't perceive a conflict. But if he comes home and wife says, hey, you better vote for this or I'm going to lose my job.
I know more about it than she does.
Right. So to pile on, but your points, very well taken, a seat yet to be filled and John would be making a decision on behalf of all the city for Washington, about Washington Lee's master plan. But that would then elevate and there are faces around here that would be, it would be a reduced number for council as well. Good question.
Excellent. And I think to have a ruling on that or an understanding before we get to that point is absolutely, would be very important.
I have a comment. I've been to planning commission meetings when an issue came up involving WNL and everybody but two walked out in there to do this. It's an issue that continues to be separately, but related to what we're at hand here. There is a pot of money getting ready to come to the city by way of this ARPA. And its availability is not known, the amount is known, I think, but what to spend it on right now is not known. There's going to be a calculation made on the growth that the city should have had, that there'll be a calculation made for unencumbered money that's associated, if the city didn't have 4.1%, as the message was, that that calculation is from 2018, that if the city didn't experience revenues for at least 4.1%, then the difference will be made up with this ARPA money and that'll be unencumbered money. So we have some of that kind of money coming out as well. And David Ziegler, at one time recently, had sent a message around that asked, could we repurpose or repackage some of the projects that are already kind of penciled in, in particular, some that have come suggestion wise from the comprehensive plan? And maybe some of this money can be used for that. And that's going to be a big job to figure that out. And I'm guessing somebody's going to be hired to help figure that out and just speculate and whatnot. So I just wanted to put that on the table, too. We're not exactly going to be out of money to do some of these things and whatnot. I just wanted to know that I think that there's a good chance that we can accomplish some of these things that have been mentioned in the comprehensive plan, in particular, Jordan's Point. You know, we approved that, we spent the money on Jordan's Point, and what have we done other than that? You know, things aren't happening, but need to happen. It's a resource in the community. So just saying in there.
From an aspirational standpoint, I would say, John, you may take note of Jordan's Point master plan and opportunities for implementation.
Yes, and that's why it's, it is a catalyst project. And I think when we met with a consultant, they presented to us, one of the things that we asked them to do in, before meeting with you, was to organize their cost estimates into packages that could be done incrementally and where would they say the priorities are? Where should we start? So I think that's an excellent, going to your point about aspirational, I don't always see it as aspirational. I see that, that this is where you begin to build towards the aspiration that you already have. And so on Jordan's Point, the fact that you and the city manager has created a special fund within the capital improvement program, there you, now you have the vehicle and you can begin to, begin to implement it and that over the next five years. So I think, you know, that, and so I, as an exercise, went back through this afternoon and looked at the goals and objectives that we have in each, because I'm, of the chapters. And this is my point to the, to the discussion we're having. So under green infrastructure, develop Jordan's Point Park in accordance with the 220 master plan. So it's there. So, you know, we're on, we're on track. And this is what I'm saying, just reinforcing all the good work that happened. This is, this, the comp plan is a guide. It's going to change, it's going to get amended, it's, you know, parts of it are not, and then we'll talk about that as item number four. But I think going back in here and looking at it is a useful exercise. And you don't have to read the whole thing, you just have to read the end, it's like, you know, Cliff Notes, right here at the end of each chapter. Under green infrastructure, undertake citywide infrastructure assessment and develop a plan to create a continuous publicly accessible green infrastructure network. Okay, we start that with the bike ped plan. You look in local economy, practice economic gardening by offering startup loans and low-cost financial advice to small minority owned businesses. Well, the Walker program has started that. So it's not, this is, there's a community partner, it's not that the city has to drive everything. I can go through here every, you know, pick out any one of these. Arts and culture, consider amending the zoning ordinance to create an arts and entertainment overlay district. Maybe that's something we want to think about two or three years down the road. Not, not next year, Arnie, on that. But this is what I'm saying about going through here and taking a look and understanding the proposals that we have and then coming back and saying, well, these are the ones we think bubble up.
Right.
That's all, that's really, so we're looking, I think the point is that the planning commission would benefit from the council's sense of those priorities and what's bubbling up.
Any response from council?
I just have a quick question for Arnie and Jim. As far as Jordan's Point development, do we have some idea of how much money has been set aside this year for Jordan's Point?
I would have to look in the budget again, but I don't believe it's much more than $75,000.
Okay.
$175,000.
$175,000, okay. But David's better with the numbers than I am.
Because there are so many projects, you know, in there. And we really do need some help figuring out, what should we get started with first? I would consider that a very high priority and it would be wonderful if the planning commission could look into that and figure out, okay, what should we start with and maybe get going on those projects? Because a lot of people are waiting on movement for Jordan's Point Park.
Yeah, of course, the, the master plan itself, there's some pieces that were extremely expensive and maybe difficult to figure out. Maybe our money is a perfect solution if we want to be forward thinking and discern some of that. Part of the challenge is not everything in there needs to be implemented, so trying to get that low hanging fruit, because we don't want to have the situation where we have currently of paving all the streets and making it lovely and then our friends from Columbia Gas coming and destroying all our streets and bringing lack of joy.
I would say another theme that the planning commission has talked about, and we spoke with Jeff Martone about it during the comp plan, was sidewalks. You know, we budget $35,000 each year for sidewalk replacement and some new sidewalks. Doesn't get you a whole lot, but to be very intentional about what sidewalks we choose because it does fit in with green infrastructure. And a big theme is walkability.
Connectivity.
Yeah, exactly. Connectivity throughout the city.
Very good. Nothing else on that?
That'll keep us busy, I think. I mean, the Jordan's Point thing and then the sidewalks, I mean, walking around the city, even half a block of a sidewalk, like sidewalk for half a block, because we have blocks where the sidewalk just stops right in the middle of the block. So I don't know how much those cost, but that's the sort of thing is, can we identify where that is? And that would make life a lot better for a lot of people, a lot of neighborhoods. So.
Right.
And more people are going to use Jordan's Point than chickens. And the amount of time we spend on chickens, we spend some of that on Jordan's Point. We'll get a bigger bang for our effort.
Would you like to comment a little bit on developing priorities? And so developing realistic work plans around operational priorities. So I'd really like to make sure that staff is involved and bring to both the planning commission and city council what we understand are operational priorities and limitations to be, so that then you at your level can plan appropriately and deploy resources in such a manner that we can then get the things done on an operational level. You're going to do some great top-down work, if you will, and visionary work, but on the other side, on the other side of that, you have to make sure we have the resources. And I think we have to at least inform you, as the mayor said, what does it cost to do these projects? We've had some costs laid out in the Jordan's Point Park plan, but what are those real costs on the ground, given what we know, what we've seen? And of course, inflationary pressures that we're going to now face very quickly, I'm afraid, with all this money floating around the economy. So I'd really like to make sure that we get a chance to interact and give you a picture of what we see operationally. Because if we have a plan in place, but we don't have the operational resources, we just can't get it done.
Right.
And that's staffing sometimes as much as dollars.
Right.
I just want to echo, I think, with the essence of your comment was, Jim, and kind of going back to what Charles mentioned earlier with this awesome new comprehensive plan, one of the things I've been cognizant of since we realized what this plan was going to be, was how it could potentially disrupt the harmony between council, planning commission, and staff. And I'm all about that harmony. So encourage us to utilize every avenue possible to keep communication clear, so we don't get upset or frustrated or confused and don't be bashful.
Yeah, there's nothing worse than working diligently at something and knowing you've got four plans yet to embrace and like, well, let's go ahead and get another plan. You're drowning in plans and you're drowning in implementation and more plans are coming down the pipe. So again, getting that dynamic tension in sync and keeping the harmony. Great word. Thank you.
Just a closing comment from my side on that is, the word aspirational has been used. I would substitute and say strategic. How can we be strategic in answering some of the issues and priorities that we have over time within staff resources? So I think this discussion is really important because planning commission So I think this discussion is really important, because planning commission, it, this, the way we operate, staff gives us a recommendation to act on. We don't act independently. So, and so that's why I think having this discussion, and that's what I mean, we're not going to sort it tonight, but at least begin to have that discussion, because, so thank you.
And last item, process for the annual review of the comprehensive plan.
To keep the plan alive and to adopt best practices, there is in the implementation chapter a review process for the comp plan. And the purpose is to review what's been done this year, and if you, and I wanted to draw your attention to the handout that you have, and if you look on page three, annex two, Lexington Comprehensive Plan Annual Review Calendar, this is another issue that I don't think we're going to resolve tonight, I just thought it was important for all of us on planning commission, staff, and city council to be aware that this review process is built in. And so there's two, two really driving pillars for us. One is issue identification, so similar as the zoning ordinance, are there things that have come up in this year that we should be concerned about in the next year? And that's part of the discussion we just had. And then if you look on page four, under annual review, you'll see that we're supposed to review the progress and completion of various projects, strategies, and preparation for our annual report to the city council, and that we would be, to do that in September. And I want to draw your attention to the questions, really, we'd be asking under the annual review. So the planning commission undertakes the annual review beginning in September. By the way, this is all the first time for us, you know, we haven't done this before to this depth of, so you'll see the bullets there. Measuring success and achieving the plan through the recommended strategies. What are the strategic initiatives and appropriate code changes to be pursued in the coming year? I like the third bullet, prioritize the short list of strategies to be addressed in the coming year that are not budget-related. So I'm not going to read them all, but I think you get the sense of this. And so this is another area that I think is, as to Jamie's point, for council, planning commission, and staff to work in sync on doing this, this review, which also is, and then you'll see there a schedule of activities which links us to the CIP process. So us, as in council and planning commission, so.
And if I remember correctly, we usually get an annual report from, from planning commission, the synopsis of activities of the year, and that's generally in January?
January.
Yeah. Okay.
So this is an extra step in the process.
Correct. Inclusive in highlighting comprehensive plan actions and where it's all linked together, which really is a celebration of the accomplishments in the past year, so. And strategies for the future. I'm adopting your words since you, since you raised it. Members of council, have any questions? David?
In, real quick, so that I don't help spread misinformation, the Jordan's Point money that's in our FY '22 budget, you won't see the word Jordan's Point in our FY '22 budget. And then at our finance committee two weeks ago is when we talked about adding money to what we already have budgeted. You walked in just now, I know, Jake, but we were talking about how much we've put aside for the Jordan's Point Park, and we've got one bit of money in the budget, and we had talked about two weeks ago at our finance committee meeting, sliding another 100 to it. Okay. And then also, I will say that during the pandemic, one of the things I did was watch a lot of your meetings on Facebook, because I was bored. And you guys do a great job, and just, you know, you know, as we come out of the pandemic and people are meeting in person again, and if we look at ways that people can attend virtually, or just listen to our meetings or see them, but watching you guys work for the whole pandemic was impressive, and just want to say thanks, because, you know, we always get your reports, but I watched it, and you guys meet a long time, and you guys do a really good job. So I just thought I'd share that, and I was sometimes the only person watching, but--
There's better shows on Netflix I could root for.
And then I would text Blake and be like, whoa, that was a doozy.
Hey.
Go ahead, Jamie.
One thing I would add, I know we're not short on things we can be working on, but if there are a few extra rainy days, I would love for us to contemplate ways within our role, we can focus on capacity building, so every single decision isn't a crisis, so we're not always up against the wall, so we're not always leaning on staff too much. There, I know, if we zoom out, there are ways for us to improve our processes, efficiencies, organization, et cetera, that will be beneficial in the long run. Doesn't sound fun to anybody, it does to me, but just adding that to the brainstorm. Thanks.
Frequently, as we're embracing any issues or discussions or approvals, I frequently declare sometimes, there's got to be an easier way. The limitations that the state imposes because of municipal code and things of that nature, we're typically not, as I tell businesspeople, are like, come on. Tell them, we're not trying to make it difficult. We've got to have a set of rules to be consistent and impose pain on everybody. Just kidding. But to be consistent, so, but I like the way you're thinking, and my perception, and I hope what, part of the reality that you've seen with staff, is that if there's a better way to address something or a better theme, they'll frequently embrace it. But certainly when we're looking at some things, you got to cover every single possible thing, even though only 10% of it applies to what you're really thinking about, in that bigger picture. But great, great point, and there are always opportunities for improvement.
Aspirational may be the word for that one.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yes, the, one thing I would encourage you to think about, Jamie in particular, is if there's some how or some ways that you think we can best connect with the other municipalities, welcome those suggestions. Historically, we've had regional quarterly dinners on different themes and topics for issues that we're all facing, but pandemic, of course, put that on the shelf. But I hope that we can renew that. Because it's almost the appointed hour, seven o'clock, we have two minutes before we start the city council meeting, but I will delay it to 7:05 to give us a chance to organize the tables. But extremely heartfelt thank you to each and every one of you on the planning commission, and also take home to your families the appreciation of staff and city council for giving you the time to join us and to do the work of our city and for our citizens. It's greatly appreciated. And with that, I'll close our meeting.
And with that, I'll say thank you and close our meeting.
Thank you, John.